Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is our council work session, and I'll call the work session to order. Our work sessions are very informal, and we have presenters this evening. During our work sessions, we go directly to our agenda. So, the first item on the agenda is the overview of Dakota County's broadband initiative, and our city manager, Heather Johnston, is going to tee it up. Our guests this evening are Lisa Elson, Director of Community and Economic Development for the CDA, and Craig Ebling, our own Craig Ebling, former city manager, now resident and consultant to Dakota County Broadband Initiative Consortium. Heather?
Madam Mayor, before I jump into this item, did you want to have -- did the council want to move the revised agenda? We dropped an item off.
Yes, and I also want to just let everyone know that Councilmember Winn is absent this evening because she has some family obligations. And, members of the council, there is one item that is removed from our roundtable, and I'd like a motion to just adopt the new agenda before us.
Second.
Okay. Bill, make the motion. Second. By, Councilmember Sherry, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Heather?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will keep my introduction brief. As you all know, the High Impact or the High Performing Partnership Committee, which is made up of Dakota County mayors and administrators, had been working on a dark fiber committee. I think Mr. Albrecht actually represented us on that committee for a while, and kind of got to a point where they wanted to move that onto the managers' group. And so, what we have been talking about for the last few months is a citywide broadband initiative. The Dakota County CDA agreed to kind of jumpstart this by hiring a consultant, and so, they took the realm, and we did some -- worked on an RFP together. We had a small subcommittee of the managers' meeting. And so, now we're at a point where we're talking about a JPA among all the partners within Dakota County. And so, we thought this would be a good time to give you a little bit more detail on the work that's been done to date, share the information from the consultant's report with you, and just get a little bit more guidance as we move forward, so.
Okay. And perhaps you want to -- we've been in this process here in the city of Burnsville for a long time. Is Mr. Ebling going to cover that, or not? Or is that?
Madam Mayor, I certainly could go through that, or Mr. Venables could go through that. We do have one of the--
I think it'll be good for our residents to know that this is not our first rodeo with regard to broadband. We've been working on this since 1995, and then we had a white paper, so, Mr. Venables, you were the author of that.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the city has been involved in some form of broadband initiatives all the way back to 1995. I've actually been an employee here prior to that, so I've been part of those initiatives along the way. As part of the background tonight, kind of a high-level or summary-level timeline was put together just to identify quite a few of those milestones over the years that the city's been involved in. I can go through each one of those, but primarily, it does show that, over the course of the last 15 years, we've been engaged in quite a few initiatives, on and off, as it relates to the city directly, or our partners that we work with on an ongoing basis, including Dakota County and our neighboring cities. Many, during the course of the time, too, we've looked at partners that we can bring to the table in forms of the private sector and other public partners around us. If you have any specific questions regarding some of these milestones, I would be glad to go into more detail of that. Beyond that, I would defer to Craig tonight to talk about the initiative, and if we can highlight some items that the city was involved in along the way, I'd be glad to speak to those items.
Because he certainly was involved also along the way. Any questions for Mr. Venables? For Tom? Not at this point, but I know it was a great process, and that white paper you wrote was very informative and very good. And also, the subject matter experts who came to our governance process that you brought in, because they came from all over the place, and I'm sure John remembers all of that, too. Okay. Mr. Ebling?
I think Ms. Elson has a few introductory things that she was going to mention.
Okay. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide some more information and kind of where we are right now in our process. Can you speak?
There we go.
Okay. Like Heather had already provided some information on where we are, and we just wanted to provide this as a kind of some details of where we are and where we have been and where we want to get going. So, looking at kind of where the High Performance Partnership ended was with the, in 2012, with the completed study for the dark fiber, and there was some concerns about a lot of getting into the technical and legal concerns and issues, so there was kind of some stopping there, and went to the city-county manager group, as Heather had mentioned, and decided trying to really want to not stop this effort but continue on and to kind of get through those other hurdles of needing to work with another consultant and kind of get into a study just to look at those components. So, the CDA took the leadership role in being, implementing that study, with the CDA taking on a third of the cost, the county taking on a third of the cost, and then the cities taking on the remaining third based on population. With that, we hired Design 9 about a year ago. It was in April of 2014. So, we, and then we also, of course, sought the assistance of Craig Ebling to help us, guide us through this process. So, right now, where we're at is we have a final draft of the study that we are looking at, hopefully to be reviewed at the end of this month by the city-county managers' group, and really wanting to get some, look at this, some ideas on how to keep this momentum going and be able to do a broadband collaboration, make it that into our reality for not only Burnsville, but all of the county and all of the cities. So, I'll hand it over to Craig, where he'll get into the nitty-gritty of it and tell you where we're at.
Thank you, Lisa.
Welcome back to the table.
It's great to be back. It really is. It's wonderful. It's, yeah, it really is, and brings back many, many, many fond memories. And some of that, well, no, all fond memories. I do need to tout my client a little bit here. This study was expensive, that Design 9 did, and Heather will tell you that cost was an issue as to how this could be funded, and who would be the contracting agency, and I think the city and county managers were a bit stalled at that point in time, but the Dakota County CDA said, "We want to help." And somebody could say, "Well, why?" And this really falls under their role in economic development, in supporting cities in the economic development of the county. And they take that role very seriously, and I think, as exhibited by their cost participation, you can see that they really do believe in it, and they've been a real boon to moving this effort forward. Some of what I want to run through tonight, I'm going to go through fast because this group has seen a lot of this information over the years. And this is mostly a presentation that we made to the mayors and managers a few weeks ago, which Heather and Mayor Kautz had seen, but we thought that it might be worthwhile to share a little bit of it with you. This is difficult work, I think, for elected officials, because the policy issues are so entangled with technical things, and kind of complex technical things, I think. I'm not a network engineer, and this is very challenging for me, even though I've been around this stuff a little bit. So, gleaning the policy issues out of all this, it's hard work. This diagram that's on the screen now actually came from the full Design 9 report, which is 148 pages plus a 52-page appendix. It's really pretty extensive. But this little diagram, we thought, was very instructive, because it really shows, I think, how this might work if it were able to be assembled. And the core network, which you see in the middle of the drawing there, is what would be conceived and put together as a part of this effort. Now, you can also see that, once we get that core network put together, there are lots of other things that relate to it. Specifically, we need to be able to get to the rest of the world, through the rest of the system, through a co-location facility, which would be part of what would be built with the core network. And then, we would append on other networks, perhaps, or other neighborhood extensions. The goal of all of this is to push fiber closer to the people who need it. And I'll talk a little bit about why we're talking a lot about fiber here in a second. But the goal is to push fiber to the businesses and manufacturers, all of industry that need it very much to compete in the global economy, and ultimately, also, to our residents, who will also need that for their own living purposes, day in and day out, but also for their own work. Many, many more people are now working from home for some or much of their work week. We're seeing that more and more. So, that's the underlying goal. This is not intended to make you all into network engineers, but we thought it might be constructive and so that you could see what's involved here, and what will remain to be done, by the way, if the core network could be assembled. We talk an awful lot, over and over, about why fiber optics seems to be the solution to future needs for the Internet, which are growing by leaps and bounds, anywhere from 25% to 50% per year is what you see cited. But you know all about fiber. I'm not going to spend any time on this. You know about fiber because Burnsville is heavily invested in fiber, more so than the, at least as much as and more than nearly all of the cities in the county. Eagan also has a sizable investment, which we can talk a little bit about in a second. I've got a photograph of that. I label this about this slide, what's happening in Dakota County now, and there's some kind of disparate things that I hope we'll tie together here in a second. The first is that investing in the institutional network, or INET, excuse me, as we often call it, is not new, especially to Burnsville, but to most of the cities in the county. The idea that we're talking about at this point in time just sort of extrapolates that, and it's a logical extension of that effort. For example, Apple Valley, Burnsville, Eagan, 196, and I think there may be others partnered together a few years ago to create a shared fiber route that goes over towards the Western Service Center. Farmington, who you may not have thought of as being an investor in fiber optics, owns five miles. Rosemount has fiber optics and is building more. Burnsville and Eagan are clearly the leaders, and Burnsville has more fiber in the ground than any other city in the county. Eagan has not quite as much, but a little bit of a different kind of fiber service in the ground. And then, the last two, which may seem to be a little bit afield, but all this does relate, in the end, to global competitiveness and economic development. Right now, the county is under stiff competition for economic development growth, not only from the world at large, but from our near neighbors. And for those of you who have not been monitoring some of the huge successes that have been going on in Scott County, I can tell you some stories that would not please you. Suffice to say that there have been at least six and maybe as many as 10 businesses that have located in Scott County, all of which were competed for in Dakota County, none of which were obtained. And one of the key factors, and maybe even the key factor, in securing those wins for Scott County was the network that they have in place. And it's, it was a deal-breaker in most of those competitions. And then, the last one I have here, again, won't seem obvious at the beginning, but I cited it because it is relevant, and that is that the county and many of its cities are members of Logis and TIES, and I would also add the DCC. Why does that matter? Because it shows that the communities of Dakota County are very adept at working together to create solutions for all of the taxpayers, and that is hard work. Mayor Kautz was alluding to the seemingly unending meetings that were done when the DCC was put together, the Dakota Communications Center. This will be something like that if it ever is successful, but the county and the cities have shown that they can do that, and that's not to be taken lightly. It doesn't happen very, very often across the country. I talked a little bit about the various investment levels that have been done by other cities in the county. This chart shows that, and you'll see that there's a disparity. South St. Paul has very little, actually, Lakeville has very little, owing to their approach, which has been to lease fiber from the incumbent providers. But from virtually none to Burnsville, who has 27, to the county, who has over 120 miles and is constructing no less than 67 more miles. They've got 67 more miles of projects in the works right now. So, that's a wonderful thing, because there is assets there to work with, but I think you'll see how that provides some challenges in putting all this together if we're ever able to do it. Here are some of the challenges. Everyone is working hard, but we may not necessarily be working in concert and leading to what could be an integrated county-wide system. I would say that the county and the cities have been very opportunistic, very crafty in making deals with each other, and also with other public entities and even private entities, in furthering broadband service in the county. But it doesn't necessarily lend itself to an integrated county-wide system. And all of this, all of these things that have been done have focused on institutional networks or trying to make government operate better, which is a good thing, but there are other things that can be done. Every time you put one of these JPAs together, it's a lot of work, as Tom Venables and Heather can tell you, and the county can tell you. The county, I have heard one time, has nearly 100 JPAs around. Somebody said, "It can't possibly be," but that's the number I've heard. Every one of those was a negotiation, and that makes it very difficult. The private sector, while making some investments, is not doing so at a very rapid speed, and I think that even the incumbent providers that you all listened to during the white paper process would tell you that that's the case. And there are valid reasons for that, I will add. I'm not here to bash incumbent providers by any stretch, but that's a, an advance in progress that's not happening very rapidly. Comcast and Time Warner, as you know, may merge, and that is really making things very confusing now. You've been struggling with that? You know more about that than I do, I'm sure, with your franchise. That is making things very unsettled, and where the situation is going for the future in our part of the country and in large parts of the country because of that merger is a bit of an unknown right now. There is unused fiber and conduit capacity out in the county, which we could capitalize on, and there is the fear that we may be missing opportunities because we can't respond more quickly. When a site-selection group comes in, they really don't want to hear what you might be able to do next year, or what seems likely that you're going to be doing in two or three years. They want to know what's now, what's in place now, and if you do have to build something, how quickly can you do it? And they really don't have time to sit down and negotiate a joint powers agreement because they're going fast. That's, they need to move quickly, and they do move quickly, and if we can't react with them, they'll go someplace where someone can. And the last one, I think, is important as well. I got to keep up with my clicker here. All of this network stuff, while it's very important, is one more burden on the IT and communications staffs for the various entities. It's hard enough keeping your software updated, the internal networks, all of the new software and hardware rollouts, all of the things that challenge an IT section. It's hard enough to keep track of that without adding network management in the greater world on top of it. And we heard that, by the way, not just from cities, cities that are staffed not nearly as robustly as Burnsville is, and Burnsville probably has half of what you need even, but cities that are much less staffed will definitely tell that. But the county, which has a much greater staff than you do in IT, sings that same. At our first meeting, to think about the joint powers agreement, that came out very clearly. The county is struggling to handle its end and is looking for a potential solution for handling the task of network management. As I said, there are existing institutional networks in various forms and various degrees in every community in the county, so what's being suggested here is merely an extrapolation of that. The one thing that is not in place now is what we call the CNET, or Commercial Network, which would attempt to use potentially unused assets that the governments own to make economic development more possible in the county. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. We've certainly seen how that can be done successfully by our western neighbor. And by the way, I might also add Carver and Anoka County, too, to lesser degrees. If a CNET exists, there is a potential revenue source there. That's never been, I think, the first goal of Burnsville, I know, when it constructed its network and has tinkered with the idea of some commercial usage of it. But nevertheless, there is a potential revenue source there. And I think the underlying thing is that the existing facilities will be used to a greater extent, and when that happens, everybody wins. Less legal costs and less legal effort, because we're not negotiating these JPAs all the time. And then, the last one I put on here is the cost of doing nothing. I never trust people who tell me that I need to do something really fast. When a salesman tells me that, it's like I put on the brakes. But there is, I think, a sense that business is more and more and more seeing very good access to communication facility, not as a plus, but as an essential necessity, and they must go where it is available. So, I think to not do anything, and Burnsville is the poster child for someone who doesn't do that, but the idea of not doing something to move broadband along will have a cost if we don't do it. What would we get if we had a consolidated, or sometimes I use the word amalgamated, institutional network? An umbrella management entity could manage the entire thing to the benefit of all members. I talked about the IT staffing challenges. It would be easier to put together an assembly of partners who could do things. Sharing fiber would be quicker and easier. We would eliminate the redundant management costs to have everything done by one group, and we would eliminate some duplication, I would think. There would be reduced costs of fiber maintenance. This would probably be contracted, but you would be contracted for a much larger quantity, and we would gain some scales of economy. And then, the last one on this slide talks about developing the institutional network as a first step to making sure that the commercial network, or the CNET, would be viable. And the byproduct of having a very robust institutional network, we hope, would be that core ring, which has commercial viability. Again, we would maximize some of the benefits that are already being realized by governments and do a better job of the investments that are being made, a little less opportunistic and more strategic. It would be a powerful business recruitment tool. We heard this from all of the cities when we were working on the study with Design 9. We talked a little bit about the potential to pay back on some of the existing capital investments that have already been made. And then, the bottom one on this page has always been in the back of our mind here in Burnsville, and that is that we believe it would make it much more likely to attract further private investment for residential fiber, fiber to the home. Fiber to the home is not a part of this effort. It's a bridge too far. It's more than anyone can handle. But the thought is, is if we had a network that spanned a community of 500,000 people, which there would be in the county as compared to ourselves here in Burnsville, 60,000 or 65,000, that that would be much more attractive to incumbents making more investments, but also some company, a large company perhaps, who may not be an incumbent here, who would come to our county, and also make it much more possible for smaller competitors to come in and offer services to our businesses and homes. The bottom line that came out of the report was that it made sense for the county and its cities to do just that, that we should invest in an enhanced and consolidated INET. The second one is a little bit of the rules of the road for how the consultant recommended that we do this, and that is that we would implement a wholesale, open-access, multi-service business model. And those are words that have lots of meaning to consultants, but to our people, what do they really mean? The first one is that government is not going to get in the Internet business here, and that has been an undergirding principle, I know, in Burnsville ever since this has been discussed. We would never become what they call an ISP, an Intersect, Internet Service Provider. But by having these facilities be available to everyone on an equal footing, to every incumbent provider and new providers who might come along, the goal would be to enhance competition and to make more options available for businesses and homes. That's the open access, which means this is open to everyone. Multi-service means that it would be for all services that an ISP could offer, which is not just the triple play these days. There's a lot more things going on than just that, but certainly the triple play and more. He went on to say that he thought that the JPA, Joint Powers Agreement Governance Model, would be the best one, and by the way, they looked at, what, Heather, 10 or a myriad of different ideas were in this, and they thought, for all concerns addressed, that a JPA was the best thing to do. There is one chunk, or actually, two chunks of fiber that would need to be built to add to the existing fiber that the cities and county already own to make that viable core ring, and I'll show you that in a second. The consultant recommended that, and by the way, that's $3.4 million, so it's a chunk of change. How will we do that? I don't know. But that's a necessary addition to make that core ring viable for commercial usage, and then also to have it be robust enough for enhanced institutional network. This map, and I'm sorry, I intended to bring a paper copy with me tonight. Anytime you try to show the county on one screen, it's going to be tiny and hard to read. I've got a website for you to look at this map. These are posted on a file transfer point, that you can pull it up yourself. But what this map does demonstrate, every one of those labels that you can't read, by the way, shows a city and points to the facilities that already exist. And if you studied this carefully, you would be surprised at how much fiber exists in the ground already that is owned by the public, and that's the gist of this idea. It's, let's capitalize on what we've already done and see if we can make some more miles out of it. Altogether, it would be about 21 miles of fiber, and as I said, it would cost altogether about $3.4 million. Where do we go from here? There has been discussions already among the city managers, kind of working at the behest of the mayor-managers group, to begin to say, what, if we were going to do a joint powers agreement, what are we going to have to agree on in that? And they have a list of about 15 different things that will need to be ironed out before this can move forward. We also intend to have lots of sessions, probably more than you want, to update local officials on this as we go along the way, and hopefully, at some point, we will have a joint powers agreement for you to consider. And once that is done, then the implementation steps would begin. I think that even in our first preliminary discussions, we're seeing that a one-size-fits-all solution's going to be really hard to do here. And I think that the joint powers agreement may have stages in it for sort of participation to a certain point, and then another decision point as to whether members want to continue to participate. And the reason I think that is that there are too many unknowns, especially for a city like Burnsville, which has a huge asset that could be implemented, could be a part of or not a part of this system. So, there almost needs to be more information and more individual negotiation, as it were, as to how this consolidated system would affect the assets in Burnsville. I think that's the way that that's going to go, but there's more to follow on that, and we'll be checking in with the cities as we go. It's going to be a thorny task, as I often say, because blending assets from members that all have varying different, very different levels of assets to bring to the picnic, as it were, is going to be tough. We also have to decide if there are costs that are incurred for this. How are we going to share those costs? If we start to generate revenues, how will we share the revenues? We've got some ideas where we think that we could protect all members on this, but those are all things that have to be worked out. We need a lot more inventory. Our engineers have done enough to know that the consolidation of the system really can work, but there are so many fibers in the ground, and the record-keeping for this is literally one of the larger tasks. I read a story the other day that because of poor record-keeping, an entity literally started from scratch. They had fiber optics, and it was so confusing to them that they couldn't make, they relayed new fiber optics simply because they couldn't figure it out. It's that intricate, because there are thousands of strands, and they are spliced in thousands of ways, and all the permutations of that get out of hand. There's actually computer software around to help with that. But that's a task that needs to be done. One other thing-- a task that needs to be done. One other thing that makes this a little bit interesting is that these joint powers agreements restrict certain things. Every joint powers agreement is different, so a city may have not total control over an asset that could be used. What do we do with those other partners that are in there? They have to be protected as well. What else is in here? Lots of policies and procedures that would have to be derived for going forward, interacting between the entity and the members, and the entity and those who might want to use the facilities. So lots of sort of policies and procedures to be thought out. The business plan, how will we market this? How will we find those new companies that may want to use our facilities? And lots of other things to be worked out that I'm sure I haven't thought of yet. I often call this the mother of all JPAs. It could very well be. But if there's ever a place in the U.S. of A that it could be done, it's Dakota County, Minnesota. So we're not discouraged. We think that it can be done because we've got cities that have demonstrated the ability to work together and the willingness to work together. So we're very, very hopeful. I've talked more than I should, probably, and I'm not a network engineer. I'm afraid to say anything because Tom Venables will stand up and say Craig doesn't know what he's talking about. He could do that in a heartbeat, but we will do our best to respond to any comments or questions you have.
Okay. Thank you. My question is going to be tossed off. Tom and Steve, I know that when they put fiber in the ground, they have to go through and get permits from us. Do we know how much fiber is in the ground, not just ours, but all of the incumbents?
In general, we have a good idea of all the fiber, but that only goes back a certain number of years. That record keeping was done for the right-of-way permit. So in general, yes, we do have a good idea where there's maybe gaps and where there's an abundance of fiber.
So my now question to Craig. We know what the institutional fiber in the ground, but what about the incumbents? With this JPA, is there going to be something that looks at that? Because one of the things that we always say in Burnsville is that we build infrastructure, but we're not content providers. And I know that you're talking about this JPA, and you're talking about how we manage the Internet, the institutional net, and then hopefully that we get to the CNET. And then you talk about the fiber assets, but also who's going to ride on it. Does this also look at content, or are we still staying away from content? Because I think that's one of the issues we have to talk about here in Burnsville, about all of that.
Mayor Council members, you have articulated exactly, I think, where the balance of the governments in the county are. And that is, as I said before, there is never any thought that they would be in the Internet business, as it were, but they would be a wholesaler of fiber optic capacity to those who are in that business. Now, there are lots of private facilities already in place by the incumbent providers, but they struggle with their own capital investment load, and this would be a way for a better utilization of existing assets that are owned by society, if you can think that globally, that all people can use. And as I said, the recommendation from the consultant is that it would be an open access system. So literally, every company could utilize this.
Just like the roads. It's county roads, city roads, state roads. It's open access to that 21st century highway.
Yes. And we hope that good use could be made of it by everyone, not just perhaps new entrants into the market, but also our existing entrants, with the ultimate goal to allow fiber to be pushed closer to those people who need it.
Yes. Okay. Mary?
I admit, I'm having a hard time getting my head around this whole thing, and not because I don't understand fiber or understand what it does, but I'm having a hard time understanding what it would do for Burnsville.
Yeah.
So here's one thing that I'd like to ask, and Jenny, and the mayor, and Heather, and even you, Craig, could probably weigh in on this, because you were there, and that is, can the city of Burnsville's existing fiber system be viewed as a microcosm of what would happen if the whole county were linked? So a follow-up question would be, if that could be, if we could use this as a microcosm as an example, then if so, how has economic development played into that? In other words, has our fiber linked? And I know we use it mainly for our SCADA, right? How have our businesses benefited from that? Have they?
I'll go to our staff.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, sure. Maybe I'll take the first stab at it and then have other folks join in. I think what we found with our fiber is because we're not connected to other cities in the counter, we're getting there to some of them, but it has been, we've had limited buyers, if you will, for the CNET, kind of the equivalent of the CNET here in Burnsville. And so because we don't have those connections, and I think that's what we've talked about with respect to the Dakota County piece.
But then I'll follow up on that, and that is, so we're connected to the county. That doesn't go a whole lot farther in my mind. I mean, now, maybe I'm just because I don't quite understand this. But do you see where I'm going? I mean, so you have city, and then you have county. End of story?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, sure. And I'm going to quickly get out of my depth here, and I'll look over to Mr. Venables, and Ms. Hardy, too, as well, as others. But I think the issue is, is that we've had businesses that are in, say, Eagan and Burnsville. But if we can't have, if we don't have presence, or we don't have connection between those, there are a lot of businesses that sort of cross county lines. I think eventually, if we kind of all sort of want to, you know, think about what the future's going to look like, eventually, I would imagine that a lot of these Dakota, the county fiber networks are going to get linked up with each other as well. But I think that for the kind of traffic that you're talking about, for example, you know, I live in Eagan and I work in Burnsville. If I wanted to have a connection, a fiber connection, so that I could rapidly get into the system using fiber, I'm much more able to do that if Eagan and Burnsville are connected, for example.
That's you. But give me an example of a business.
Right. Well, let me, and I would jump into that particular piece in that a lot of businesses are finding nowadays, who attract the kind of employees that they want, that they are seeking places where they can accommodate a lot more work from home, because that's what those employees want. And so you have businesses that might be located in, I can't remember the one we were talking about with Eagan and Burnsville. Was it Thompson?
Thompson Reuters does utilize quite a bit of the fiber that's in Eagan. But there's other companies that may be located in one county and have branch offices in another county, and if those counties are interconnected, that fiber optic connection can provide them access that otherwise they may have to move their business to gain access to. One of the key pieces of a CNET in general is you're going to tie that commercial network into a co-location facility that gets you out onto the Internet, ties you into the rest of the world. So it's not geographically related within just the county itself. An example of that is what Scott County's done. Their Scott County Fiber, actually, they lease and they have, and they own fiber all the way into downtown Minneapolis. And because of that, they can offer Internet and high-speed services to companies within the county just by tying into that Scott County fiber ring. Those companies no longer have to provide or provision fiber or buy services to get to that same location in Minneapolis. They know they can do that just by accessing that Scott County fiber ring.
Bill, and then I'm going to go to, Craig, are you answering that same question?
I was going to add to what Tom and, and I don't want to interrupt, but to me...
Okay. I'll go to Craig and to add to that, and then Bill.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember, thank you. To me, the thing that's in it parochially for Burnsville goes back to what I said before. We're a community of 65,000 people, and we have some fiber optics here. That is attractive on a certain level, but it doesn't provide a real heavy incentive to bring new providers in, because I think we've learned that you can have lots of dark fiber, or for that matter, even lit fiber, but if you don't have the content providers and the ISPs, the Internet service providers, who want to utilize that facility, it's as good as not having it. You know, and we have repeatedly said that we're not going to be in that business. We're not going to do the Monticello model. We're not going to make deals with individual businesses for providing their services. So we need other people to come on and to be a part of that system. If we have a unified system that accesses 500,000 people instead of 60,000 people, that, I think, makes a big difference. And then also parochially for the city, the integrated and amalgamated institutional network would provide a much more robust and resilient institutional network for all of the cities, because it would be more and more outlets to the rest of the world. So it would be a more robust system for the city's own governmental services purposes. But as far as the CNET gains for the city, I think it would open the investments that you've already made to other providers from outside the area that we presently have.
Okay. Bill?
Well, for me, you know, I've been on the council for four and a half years. I've not been approached by a business in that timeframe to tell me that this is some need at any meeting or at any level. Secondly, there's way too many unknowns, and there sounds like a deadline. So for the costs are not nailed down, $3.4 million, who pays what? We have more assets? Well, anyway, so for that reason, I would not be for this, for those reasons.
Okay. Dan?
A couple of questions. Scott County, did they go through a very similar process, Craig, as to what we're going through now at Dakota County? Or how did they get to where they are today, where they attracted all those six to 10 larger businesses? I'm fairly familiar with the bigger names.
Well, it was Emerson Electronics, Shutterfly, Data Card. CenturyLink is actually building a huge center over there now. Their process was a little bit different than what we have in Scott County. And that, in the case, excuse me, in Dakota County, in the case of Scott County, the county on its own built the entire ring itself in 2006, I think, 2006, in that timeframe.
The cities weren't partnering the way...
Cities weren't partnering. The county financed the entire thing itself, and then made access for the, made access available to all of the cities.
They basically built it. They were the wholesaler, made it available to cities, made it available to the ISPs. And so they built the backbone and then sold it in a wholesale basis.
Yes. And they're now using it as an economic development tool, and it's been extremely powerful. The folks from Emerson were considering lots of sites, but when they learned what was available to them in Scott County, virtually all of them went off the table, including the ones in Dakota County. I think the, in terms of businesses and whether or not they need that, a lot of times, the data shows that the real cost savings for existing building, for existing businesses, comes a couple of years afterwards, because they're not yet set to use all of the extra capacity, but they then incorporate it into their business processes, and they make their gains somewhere between a year and a half and two years later.
You want to follow up?
I have a few questions.
Oh, okay. I'll have Dan go finish up with his questions, and I'll back to you, Mary.
How does the fiber, or the fiber in the ground, competing with, or maybe reverse that question, how is wireless and fiber sort of competing in the marketplace? Wireless has been coming on fairly heavily, yet we're still sort of fixated on fiber in the ground. Is there speed? Is it cost? What's still making fiber a preference over?
Shall I go to Tom or Craig?
Well, I can start out, and Tom will wink at me when I say something wrong. We will always have wireless service. I mean, there are aspects of what will happen with data transmission that will always use wireless. As long as we have cell phones, there will be an aspect of wireless service. What people don't realize is that cell phones carry the messages at very short distances in the air, and then they go on fiber. All of, it's called backhaul, all of the backhaul for cellular phone service, and by the way, for radio data transmission utilizes fiber optics as well. And it does that because of the inherent limitations with transmitting data through the air. Both speed and volumes are limited with radio transmission. Wireless has a part in all of our data transmission needs as we go forward, but it simply cannot handle the flood of data transmission that goes on every day. And this is the statistic that I've cited a couple of times, which I find to be really interesting. 60% to 70% of the capacity of the Internet at night is used by Netflix, and that's getting bigger and bigger and bigger every day. It's simple, and that comes through fiber optics primarily, except for the last parts of it where it goes to homes. Radio transmissions simply can't do that. They don't have the speed and they don't have the volume. Same is true, by the way, of existing plant. Copper and even coaxial cable, which is better than copper, has inherent limitations, physical limitations that makes it difficult, making some advances, but it will never be sort of the unlimited volume that you can get through a fiber optic cable.
The Netflix example is a good one. That's where, I think Tom may have talked about this, is the entire delivery of software is going to software as a service as opposed to purchase a disk loaded on your computer. So that bandwidth demand is rapidly sucking up the bandwidth that exists today, because so many companies are going to subscription-based type of. Last question, is the issue with leasing from an incumbent really, fact that they don't really have the capacity in the ground? Because Lakeville is leasing from the incumbents, but I would assume that they're going to, unless the incumbents down there are different from other cities in Dakota, they're going to run into some capacity and lack of fiber in the ground, and they're going to have to start considering putting in their own or participating in this group.
Councilmember, I think you're on to it there. There is a limited, the incumbents have fiber, but they don't have it everywhere, and they use it for their own purposes as well. So they may not have the facilities where a city may need it for its own institutional needs. You know, they certainly don't have it for every lift station and every pump station or whatever that you may ultimately like to have it for. And they may certainly have segments of it here and there, but they would probably never have the ring that would be constructed or assembled with this idea.
Well, I just want to make one comment to close out after these questions. Listening to Councilmember Coughlin's comments, and I know that that's where I was a few years ago when we went through the white paper process, and really when broadband were, was municipal broadband, which was almost a dirty word to some of us, was being pitched around the country. And Craig alluded to it when we went through the white paper process, and it caused some private sector incumbent providers to step up and really kick into gear, but they only went so far. And it's very clear to me that there is a problem with the capital investment requirements covering this much landmass that the private sector is just not able to come up with. And one of the things we talked about back then that I was certainly open to is, don't want to be a provider, but to put in the backbone, to fund it through our funding mechanisms, and then lease it to recover those costs over a number of years, may be the one, you know, primer in the engine to get it going. But nothing ever really happened, and now that this project is coming before us, and this is coming back to the table, I heard you allude to essentially that. So I'm glad to see it finally get to this point, going back many years with this discussion. And I've come to the conclusion that this is a lot like our investment in Greater MSP. I mean, we sat at this table and debated whether we should put $25,000 a year into a marketing effort that was metro-wide to help make us more competitive. a marketing effort that was metro-wide to help make us more competitive, because we were losing companies and losing businesses to other regions of the country. And we might have cold, nasty winters, but we have a high-quality workforce and a high quality of life up here. So this is becoming one of those economic development challenges that causes even, certainly people like myself, to relook at it through a different lens as to, and really, it's from my private sector business glasses. I'm looking at this saying, how am I going to incent businesses to come into this city or county when this, and I know for a fact, following the tech industry as closely as I do, is a major barrier to entry? And I have followed it for many years, and so in a way, I'm soaring, I'm coming clean with reconciling my philosophical views on government and private sector incentives and necessities to get businesses to come in to be competitive. I guess the best close I can make on this is, I believe we should continue and go forward on this. I support this. But Scott County smacked us in the face with an example of exactly what happens when you hide your head, say you're not going to get into this business, leave it to the private sector, they don't do anything because they can't, because they have different issues to overcome, to put it in place, and then we watch the business go to another county. Shame on us for not being long-sighted enough to figure this out before. And I'm part of that problem. I'm no longer going to be part of the problem. I really want us to be open-minded to this, look at it as an economic development tool, and start looking at it as a, something that isn't going to be necessarily a cost out of our product, out of our pocket. It's an investment that we will recover by wholesaling this as a partner. And I'm glad that we're not, see, the context of this discussion the last time was, it was the city, it was just us on our own. And that was one of my biggest problems with it, is why are we doing this? Why are we having this discussion on our own? Now that it's more global and it encompasses the entire county, I think this is a far more intelligent way to approach this. And I'm glad that the CDA jumped in and said, we'll take the lead, we'll partner a third of the cost, we'll help get this along. So a lot has happened, Bill, and over the last several years, and I am at a completely different place today after seeing this than I was three, four, or five years ago, going back to the earlier discussions, where I was absolutely right where you were. Your opinion was verbatim where I was, I stood then, and there's a lot of things that I've learned and a lot of things that have happened. And the Scott County example is, all I need to hear to say, we have to open our doors and our minds to invest in this, so we don't continually watch the business go elsewhere. This is, you could take this on a state-by-state, you can take this on losing business to other countries, this is, this is a challenge for us. It's difficult for us to digest, it's certainly difficult for me as a, you know, in my government philosophy, but this is a wise investment for us to move forward.
I'm glad to hear that you've made up one eighty.
You know what, it's been a long road, but, you know, we don't have to get smacked around too much before we finally go out in the hall and fisticuffs and work it out, right?
Because I have a lot of, yeah, I have a lot of, I have a lot of examples that, Mary, when I get to make my point.
This is the dark side of the table, right? Because I have some questions. You talked about the back haulers with the cellphone and the wireless. They've got fiber in the ground, right? They make money on that, right?
Yeah, presumably.
Presumably have an opportunity to make money if they put fiber in our ground and link the county. Why aren't they doing that? Why don't they connect to the fiber that they have already for their backhaul? Just a question.
Councilmember Sherry and Councilmembers, I think Councilmember Keeley has articulated maybe what the incumbents would say if they were here. This all, it all costs money. They have, they have a model where they need to show returns on their investments, and government can take a longer view on realizing investments, on realizing returns on investments, and it can also recognize some intangibles. Incumbents have to generate a very fast return, and no incumbent has approached us with the idea of invent, of investing in an institutional network to serve the governments or to be a CNET for the county.
Another question. Why isn't Dakota County just laying it out the way Scott County did, if it's such a great deal? Because we already have more miles than any other city. I feel we, you know, we would be asked to contribute probably as much as any other I just feel, you know, why doesn't the county just do it?
Madam, and Councilmember Sherry, that would be testimony that we could give to them. The county, Dakota County, I think, has always been someone that works collaboratively with the cities. We build highways together, we do, we run a DCC together, we do all kinds of things collaboratively, and I think they thought, they saw this as an extension of that, of that pattern. Could they do it on their own? Scott County did, yes, they could.
And I have one more question. And that is, I have, you know, all of you know me, know I love techno stuff as, too, I really, really do. But I have done some work on the Internet, you know, just looking this up, and I have to say it came wirelessly, and I did not have a link into fiber. But I've seen more bad stories where the cities or communities or counties got stuck for higher costs than they anticipated, lower revenues than they anticipated, and I have them here if you are interested in seeing them. And they're right up to last month that I've seen, seen these comments. And they really scare me as a taxpayer. I'm thinking, you know, I just hate to fall in love with technology when the private market, the private industry really kind of knows what they're doing when they're selling it. In other words, what I'm saying is, these cities and these communities thought that they were going to get a return on their investment from the private businesses and the individual homeowners or whoever was buying, paying them for it. They didn't get as much as they had, they anticipated, or they had to raise costs way beyond what people expected. It's not really pretty. I do not want to see us in that situation, and that's why I'm really dragging my heels here, because I don't want people to go back and say, you know, what were you thinking? You know, the private market wouldn't act like that.
Yeah. Bill? And then I'm going to go to Tom, because I bet you and I are thinking about the folks from Utah.
Craig, I didn't understand the answer to your question about why Dakota County, are you saying that they might consider, would consider absorbing the $3.4 million cost and putting the CNET together like Scott County? Or, I didn't quite understand your response to her question.
Councilmember Coughlin and Councilmembers, I hope I didn't commit the county to something. I don't do that.
No, no, you didn't. You didn't commit it, I just didn't quite, did you say that was an open question?
Well, what I said is, could the county do that? Of course, they could. That hasn't been the traditional way that the county has done these kinds of things. They usually work cooperatively with the cities.
That's what Scott County did, correct?
Scott County did the entire cost of the ring themselves.
Yeah, the C-ring, the $3.4 million C-ring.
We don't know how much.
The $3.4 million is for a couple of segments to add to...
So let me ask a better question.
There's a couple of gaps. We call it the Gap closer project. So the idea would be to use existing facilities around the county, and then we have to plug a couple of gaps.
So if you're going to guess what the 21 miles would, is that the, is that the 21-mile gap fix?
21 miles is a gap.
And, but that's not the C-ring?
That would, that would allow the construction of what we think is a viable, enhanced institutional network and would be the core ring for advancing to...
And that cost is $3.4 million, correct?
Yes, that would, that would...
Do you have any idea what Scott County spent for what they did initially?
Well, it's been many years ago and...
Best guess?
Yeah, oh, $5 million, maybe.
Heather, you had a comment, and then I could, and then I'll come...
Did you, I mean, a couple of things. We were talking about a couple of different things, and I know we had a couple of different frames, and I just wanted to get a sense, the conversation is focused primarily on the CNET, and I think that's where the commercial network and making the fiber available for the CNET. And so just in terms of clarity for me and staff in terms of guidance, the INET, the institutional network, in fact, to Councilmember Sherry's question about what's in it for the city and the county, specifically the city of Burnsville, and that, I think, is where some of the INET pieces are probably more relevant, unless we do have a successful CNET that ends up generating some money to help repay for the fiber. And so I guess maybe I'm posing another question, which maybe it's too early to pose the question about whether, whether councilmembers have different views on the INET versus the CNET. So we can come back to that.
Come back to that until we're still having questions and discussion, because I also want to chime in on this, and so, but, Tom, to get to some of Mary's questions, because this is some of the arguments against in 2006 about government entities, and one of the people they were throwing darts at was the consortium in Utah.
The consortium that the mayor is referring to specifically is a consortium called Utopia that was municipal-owned fiber optic network based on an open access model that would allow for any service provider to come in and connect to it and provide services then to the community anywhere that that fiber reached. They looked at a model that could fund it through special bonding and also then what the payback period on it. They've had, over the years, in the initial, first couple of years, very good success. But the years since, it's been somewhat of a rocky road, and it's one of the models that still, though it gets highlighted, because they've had some ups and downs, and haven't kept close watch of it over the last couple of years, but...
I do have something I just saw that the communities involved in that, five voted against it, and I think there are 11 that are in it, and those are all tied into it. Their customers have been billed as a surcharge on their utility bills of $20 a month, just to pay for that.
Theirs was based on a fiber-to-the-home concept. So they brought fiber all the way to every dwelling in the community, including all businesses. What the county is describing today doesn't go to that extent. It creates a core ring that would provide incumbents or any other outside groups to come in and tie into that core ring, travel that core ring, if you can call it that, to get from one point to another point within the community and deliver services much cheaper, because the infrastructure is already in place, rather than having to expend the capital to do it themselves. Today, that model has worked to some degree for us. We actually are providing some backhaul services today through agreements that we've had with private providers, primarily at some of our water tower sites, where they've not necessarily been interested in building fiber all the way to the water tower, but they've tied into our fiber in a close area where they might have had some fiber in proximity to ours. And then they can travel our fiber all the way up to the water tower site to provide a backhaul service to the cellular carrier. And that's prevalently what we've seen happen in our community today. We're also doing that through some joint powers agreements with the state of Minnesota, Dakota County, and most recently, Minnesota Valley Transit. Minnesota Valley Transit actually licenses some of our fiber to get to, from their transit hub on Highway 13 and Nicolet Avenue. We carry their traffic back to our, to City Hall here, and we connect to the state of Minnesota via our fiber connection to the state here, and that's how Minnesota Valley gets their Internet services, utilizing and purchasing fiber from us. So there's ad hoc type of arrangements that we've had over the year. Happy to say that, and I can report that, the cost and the maintenance of our fiber on an annual basis is cost neutral. Those agreements that we've had in place for several years now pays for that annual maintenance that we would otherwise have to pay for on fiber. And when we talk about maintenance on fiber, generally what that refers to is the locate cost, the go-for-one locates that we're required to do anytime any development occurs within the community or any right-of-way access occurs. The city is required to have a locating service done to locate our fiber and other utilities that the city owns, just like any other telecommunications provider or utility provider would.
Okay. Craig, is that an addition to that before I go to Dan?
Well, I was going to add on, a little bit to talk about some of the negative things that have happened that Councilmember Sherry alluded to. The majority of them have been when the city became a content provider, actually became an ISP provider. Because then, you know, you're into the business of having extended the last mile that Tom talked about, fiber to the home, and you've expended all that money, and you're now dependent on a take rate, what they call it in the industry, a take rate. And if the take rate's not high enough, yes, then there are problems with the model and so on.
But we never said that we would ever get into content. We would build infrastructure.
The government said that we're not going there, that's part of the business.
Yeah. Dan?
Thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify, because some of what you were referring to was a model that has absolutely nothing to do with what we've been talking about. And so in this visual, because this is kind of a spider-looking thing, the core network that donut in the middle, which is really just the backbone, and then everything feeds off of that, that's the only thing that we are talking about. So if that were highlighted in red and everything else were black, and, you know, you can almost put like private sector and local governments for their own, you know, INET, but that's the only part that we are talking about getting in, the business of supporting to build. So then the ISPs and the incumbents can branch off of that, pay a fee to access that, just like Tom alluded to has done now. And that's where we pay off the investment over a number of years. That's, but that's all we're talking about. And our cost in Burnsville would be somewhat lessened by the fact that we already have our SCADA fiber network in, and that's what we're talking about, patching into this network, you know, and filling in the gaps, as we have ours and Egan's got theirs. And so the 21 miles is to connect them all together. But that's all that donut ring is, is what our SCADA network, nothing of what that Utopia project is, relates in any way, shape, or form relates to what we're talking about.
However, if I read the report correctly, the income from leasing out that fiber would pay for this supposedly, and I'd like to see, I haven't seen any financials on this.
Yeah.
We need to be really careful about that. There could be some rated on here, but that's totally an unknown. This is thought of as bringing first a way to enhance the institutional networks to make sure that all the governments do their business in the most efficient way they can. Once that's in place, there may be revenue opportunities. I hope I didn't represent any, anybody that I thought this was a money-making thing or not. We just don't know about that at this point.
I don't think you did, but as I read the document, that was the impression I got.
I think you need to be very careful about that, because we don't, we don't know how all that would go.
Well, and then also on the amount, you said the cities would pay one-third. What's the total cost of this?
Total cost of the study was 128...
No, no, that's a study, the whole project.
$3.4 million.
How much?
Well, the gap closing project, the first initial gap closing project was $3.4 million. No one has suggested a cost-sharing method on that at all.
Okay, but then you were talking about the cities paying one-third of the cost.
Oh, no, that was already...
That was just a study.
Okay.
Oh, I misunderstood.
That was just a study.
Actually, the CDA paid one-third, because...
The county a third, and all the cities collectively a third.
Okay, okay, misunderstood, thank you.
Okay. So let me just share with you what Councilmember Wynn, she supports the county-wide broadband initiative, and she thinks that both INET and CNET should be explored. And I think we need to look at what the recommendation is from our staff in terms of what we need to direct them to do. And I think that's what Councilmember Wynn's first point is. And then she also says she's open to a JPA entity to manage the, and oversee, but need someone to manage, because we need someone to manage the operations. And then she also says, but financially equitable, it needs to be financially equitable to Burnsville, and that needs to be explored, and it needs to be fair across all cities. So that's her comments about it. Now, as I looked at this, and because I've been on this journey since 1995 with, about the broadband here in Burnsville, and... the broadband here in Burnsville, and Bill, you said that you haven't heard from any businesses. One of the things that happened in Burnsville back then was the hospital was beginning to look at having the kinds of consulting in the, in the surgical theaters, and they wanted to have those kinds of access. And that's when they, but we didn't have it, any way of helping them. But Frontier Communications did a special upload-download just for the hospital. Then you have our businesses. And during the boon in the, of the internet, in the late 90s and into the 21st century, we had our businesses such as Permac, who was beginning to do business in China. And when they were going to transmit files, it was so hard because it took them, Tom, did they say 24 hours to download and upload a file?
In general, CAD files, yeah.
And that was prohibitive for them to do that. So that was, and there were many businesses at the time who were looking for help. And, and that brought us to explore all of this because the incumbents weren't open to that. So from an economic development perspective, I think this is the 21st century highway. But I do want to make sure that we in Burnsville, with all of the investments that we have made in our assets, that I want to make sure that we look at this very carefully, and that's what I would say to our staff. I would be open to exploring a JPA and a county-wide broadband, because again, to Dan's point, it's leveraging, and that what we do in Burnsville so well, is leveraging our resources, so our dollar is stretched out further. But I want to be very careful because lessons learned from the DCC, and I shared these with Craig, and going forward, I shared some of this with Heather as well. So I want to make sure that we don't surrender our assets. We've invested in our assets, and perhaps, I don't know if a lease agreement of our assets is a possibility. So we don't lose any of that. But I am open to exploring the JPA. I also want to make sure that we look at that gap that you talk about, Craig. And how do we do that? And how do we incorporate all of the assets that the, that, well, Burnsville owns 27 miles, Egan 17, and then the others? I, it's that formula, how we do that, that's going to be, because I'm going to look at that very, very carefully. But I'm, I'm seeing that there are three who are saying, let's explore this. I don't know if, I know Bill came out and said, no, he's not open to it, but I don't know. Mary had been asking a lot of questions.
I, I'm not totally closed to it. I'm just very, I'm just, I'm just very, very cautious on this because I do not want our taxpayers to get stuck with old technology, or technology that we can't afford to keep upgrading. Now, I would like to add one thing to you, to your request, and that is, I would also like to, the request of, what, what would the county say to doing it on their own?
Yeah, that, that can be something.
You know, I think that should be part of it. I mean, I, I think that our GPAs, and I'm, I love working with other communities and with the county, I think it's great because not everybody should have to do everything on their own, but, but let's face it, we've already done a lot.
Yeah.
And I don't want to just give that away.
Yeah, and that's why I want to, I don't want to surrender that.
But that's why I would like to say, because there's disparity in what the cities have already done, maybe it makes more sense for the county to do it, and then the cities plug in as, as they need to.
Yeah, I think there's a way of getting this done. It's just that we have to go on this road together and, and, and continue to do some exploration. Because when I look at our timeline, and Mary, we've done a great deal. And I think when we invested in putting fiber to connect all of our facilities, Tom, we're okay with that, aren't we? And Heather, on a financial basis, when we did, when we did the bonds for that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you recall that that came out of the utility funds?
Yes.
So that was.
But we bonded through utility.
So, I mean, so are we okay on that? Yes, we did do that investment from that now. That's, so there's always sort of the outstanding question for you all, that if this does generate revenue, does it go back to the utility funds? Does it go back to the, I mean, there's lots of questions.
Yes, I think that comes a little later.
But that's a lot later. But, and I think this whole discussion is actually, you know, I think you all have a good sense of, of, you know, the various complexity, complex issues associated with this. And I think we have gotten some really great feedback from you all, and I think the overarching thing that we've heard is, is we need an abundance of caution as we move forward on this, and that we need to make sure that we're keeping you all up to speed on the varying stages of the, the JPA, and if we're moving in that direction. This is not tonight. We're not taking this as a direction that we should sideline on the JPA.
No, 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 no.
That's not what I'm hearing from any of you. But what I'm, what I am hearing is that there's a lot of complex issues, and that we're going to need a lot more information before you all are comfortable.
Yeah, and then, and I think we need to move, we need to go down this road and, and explore, just like we did with the DCC. Boy, those were thorny issues back then, too, because Burnsville was far ahead, because we have inoperability within our public safety department between fire and police. And because we have a fully-paid fire department where others all had, most of the others had volunteers, so they didn't have the kind of interoperability that we had. So we had to move through some of those thorny issues. So lessons learned for me is that I'm going to be watching. Craig knows this. And so we'll, we'll, but I'm open to all of that. I, I just want to make sure we take care of the assets that belong to the people of Burnsville, and that's our stewardship of assets. Bill?
Clarification, Mayor, excuse me. Is it then just Mary, Sherry, and I are advocating back to ask the question about whether the county would, would provide the financial backing to do the connecting?
No, I'm, I'm, that's a fair question.
That's a fair question, but I'm open to walking down this road, and that's one of the questions that Craig and Lisa will, will ask. But is the JPA a possibility as well? Yes, I think all of that is on the table. Right? Dan?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, you know, there can be, there's different parts to this, too. If the entity were ever to come into existence, there's the, this initial capital thing to do the gap closing project. But then there's how do we run it once we're done?
Yeah.
Presumably then, what would happen is that we have this system, and if the members have contributed some of their assets, they're, they're no longer responsible for maintaining those, but then the entity has to maintain those. And if there are costs related to that, how do we share those costs? And so on. So there's, it's not, doesn't have to be necessarily all in one, but I interpret the council's discussion here to say, at least for this initial gap closing project, how about the county pays for that?
Yeah.
It's clear we have a long way to go. My, my, my comments are, I believe we need to move forward and explore this more. I'm delighted in my, with my past knowledge and history of these discussions, that it's going in this direction, that it's focused on just the core network as a wholesale to put the fiber in the ground to then work with, you know, for the INET and as well for the CNET. I think it'll, it is a little bit of one of those, if you build it, if you build it right, they will come. There is going to be increased demand over time. It's only going to get faster, and demand is only going to get greater. And so I'm not concerned at all about the revenue down the road to pay for the infrastructure build at all. There's just no question it's coming. It are, it's coming at lightning speed in recent, in recent, very recent years, because of the explosion of SAS, SAS, as I said, and Netflix and downloading. I mean, everything is moving off of hard drives and onto immediate streaming. And that's just demanding bandwidth at a faster pace than, than all of history combined. So I, I just think that this is the direction I was hoping it would end up going, and I'm delighted that it's getting that way, and that we've got partners with the county. And it'd be great if the county would pay for this and build the rest of the ring and take over, you know, the maintenance. But if that doesn't work out, I think we have, we have some willing partners that have done good things together in the past that can make this work. Again, I don't think our costs are going to be significant, because we've already done so many miles of this ring. Our part of that core network exists in a pretty major way. A city like Lakeville is going to have a very large expense of part of that because they have next to nothing.
Yeah. Mary?
Well, you're right, if you run the numbers right, but I just don't want this to be one of those things that we're all in this together. Do you know what I'm saying? So, so.
My position is we're going to get credit for this. We've already put the ground.
My question is, you know, would Burnsville's existing fiber be considered our contribution or part of our contribution to this? Because I don't want to be paying for another community's fiber because they haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I think that's everything that ours, we can direct our staff to do, Mary, and that's what I mean, is that I don't want to surrender any of the assets that we have. And so there are many things that we can, can talk through. I'm going to go to Heather and then back to you. Heather?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, I think that's what I've heard tonight, is that we want to make sure, which, which, that we get credit for our current investment, and that we're being cautious when we look at any cost-sharing arrangements, to make sure that, that being kind of an early adopter doesn't work against us. And I think that's the challenge of this effort, because it's, you know, people are in such difference that that's what's making.
Yeah, like we did with the state and the water cleanup and the investment we made. We didn't get credit for all.
Yeah, so I think there, we, we have a good story to tell, and it's, and the thing is, we've been in this since 1995, as, as this, this journey. I've been on this, so have learned a great deal. And so we, we need to make sure we look out for the best of our community. Mary?
I think for the citizens who are watching, and those who will read about it, I think it would be helpful, just going down the road, to have actual services that would be provided by an INET linking Burnsville to the county, to other communities. You mentioned MVTA. I'd like to see those actually laid out in a list. And I'd also like to see what our own fiber ring has done for the community since it was initially installed, things that we now just take for granted, things that, that we could, we can do now. And Tom, you would know this, probably you could just spout it right off. But, but this helps, it would help me, and I think it would help others to see, you know, what do you get? What do you get for this? You know, is this just a feel-good thing, or is it just something to be cool, you know, hip and cool? Or is this something that, with a real, with real deliverables?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, if it's okay, if it's okay with folks, I would ask Tom to just do at least, you know, kind of the more-than-hip part of that question related to the INET. Because I think that we do have some really tangible things related to the INET that Tom could just kind of give us a, we can still kind of, we'll keep your listing in mind as we move forward on this, but definitely thought it would be helpful.
Yeah, and this is a good start to your question, Mary, because that really helps for Tom, because I know you have a wealth of information on all of this. Go for it.
The institutional network, as it provides service today to the city, I can provide you a long list, a written list, too.
No, a verbal is great.
But some of the things initially that it's allowed us to do is it, it connects 10 staffed facilities. It connects another 45 non-staffed facilities, primarily our water utility sites, for daily real-time monitoring and alarming of our entire water utility system.
And now the meters are coming in.
It also allows us to deliver enterprise-class applications, rather than duplicating those systems, that each of those can deliver them all from one primary site, and that being our data center here, where we can deliver email, phone services, internet service, without having to replicate those things and buy telco services for each of those sites. Those are just a few of those things. We also then deliver our security systems, security cameras, you've heard a lot about over the, over the last year or so, our ID card access system to all facilities. It just allows us to leverage more and more things, and that's what the institutional network does. It's an isolated network that only connects our governmental agencies. Now, beyond the city of Burnsville, it also connects us to the state of Minnesota for state services. It connects us to Dakota County. Currently today, for county services, we, we purchase GIS services where we have access to their GIS systems that we didn't have to purchase here and have onsite here. And there's many, many more examples of those types of things that we're able to leverage because that institutional network exists, a portion, a large portion of it exists today. As one of the outcomes to the white paper and the governance process that was held back in 2006, council directed staff to continue to facilitate broadband access and economic development as much as possible through meeting with the providers, meeting with the, the local partners. In addition, at that time, we were planning for the institutional network build-out of our own for the, for the water utility. Once that came to fruition, we identified, it's meeting our needs, now what would the council like us to do with that institutional network? And your direction at that time, roughly in 2008, was continue to foster broadband expansion in the community. The city doesn't want to provide an internet service or get to, get into retail, but we do want to continue to foster those partnerships and expand where we can and cover our costs where we can, but we never went into it with a revenue generating in mind. So the institutional network does meet the city's needs today in terms of what we've built, but we do have excess capacity now that we could offer for other purposes. We've tried to do that to some of the private providers that we know of that are looking for services, but that's a challenge. We don't have the staffing resources to do that. We don't have the marketing resources to do a lot of that. So we've elicited some partners in the community. Our primary one today is Frontier Communications to help us in that effort. It's, it's been, we've made some progress, maybe not as much as we've liked to over the last few years, but we continue to try to foster the use of our, it's kind of a hybrid CNET, if you would call it that, but it really isn't any, the city's not providing any services on it today. We're literally just licensing or leasing our dark fiber assets, and that what that means is our, it's unused. And we have more that's unused that could be utilized for this initiative or other initiatives.
And Frontier does pay us for that, correct?
Frontier, our arrangement today currently for marketing services for that asset, it also provides us up to $20,000 in locate service fees every year. So annually, we receive about $20,000 from Frontier to cover our, that portion of our locate fees. In addition, Frontier was able to utilize some of that fiber to provide their own services throughout the community, and they did, they do do that today. So they, they connect to our fiber in the southwest corner of Burnsville. They ride that fiber all the way up to our water tower sites, and they provide some backhaul services to providers on our water tower sites today. So it is a community benefit in that regard. They're providing a service at a water tower site that otherwise may not be there or another provider would have provided.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Staff, do you have the directions that you needed?
Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
Okay. Craig and Lisa?
Thank you very much for your time. It's great to be back.
Do you have the information that, yes. So you've heard that we're saying, okay, let's move down this road, but we're going to be, you know, making very sure that, that we're good stewards of the people's assets of what we have already. And we want to make sure that we don't surrender any of that.
And Madam Mayor, we'll report back to you on the, the answer to the question about whether Dakota County will pay for.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your coming in. Well done. It's really a great topic for us, and I like the fact, like Councilmember Keely, that we're leveraging more resources around this economic development highway. So, thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, the next, yep, yeah, when we get to the meters, this, this INET is really going to help with the new meter system that you have. INET is really going to help with the new meter system that you have for us. So now the next one is the review of the 10-10-7 policy for code enforcement. And we have Jenny and Chris Forsland here. So Jenny is our economic development director, and Christopher Forsland is our licensing and code enforcement director. So, Chris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, I guess I just learned more about broadband than I ever thought possible. It was really interesting to hear the conversation on there. I'm going to try to keep this perhaps a bit more, less technical, but nonetheless, more, you know, it's important to me on this. In December of last year, we, we received a direction to move forward looking at some of our enforcement policies, one of which was policy number 2.070, which we commonly call as 10-10-7. And what we were directed to do at that time is take a look at some alternate processes and bring them forward. And we're going to do that tonight. Part of our concerns with bringing this forward had to do with some, well, actually complaints that we get from the public or from residents, well-intentioned, that it takes us a long time to solve things. And what we hope to, we could do is address that. We're also hoping to build some efficiencies into the, the program by taking a look at our compliance times and perhaps making some modification to it so we could make better use of our, you know, limited staff resources. And by what we did notice from the last couple of years of, of data collection, and this was all in the packet, too, is we were really having some limited gains by that third notice. And it didn't make a whole lot of sense to, you know, to, to continue with that if, if we didn't need to. And we also wanted to look at some additional tools that might be helpful. Types of violations that we see out there, exterior storage type things, these are issues that we're trying to find some timeliness with and, and perhaps move them on. And there we go. As well as some that we have to look at do take a greater amount of time. Roof, roof repair on there.
Mary? Chris, because I was at a meeting where you said, go back to that last picture, would you explain what's going on there?
Yeah. I was hoping someone would ask.
I mean, this, you have to, you can't believe this story.
This was a twin home.
Yeah.
This was a twin home where.
Remember this?
Yeah. And, and somebody had basically replaced one side of the roof in violation of the ordinance and then replaced the other side. Was unfortunately a rental, too, on one side. And it caused a little bit of strife on, on trying to resolve it in a, in a timely manner, too. But these are the variety of complaints and violations that we want to resolve. And sometimes you do have to be fairly creative on how you, how you do that. Again, the need to take a look at, you know, alternatives here. There we go. Maybe. So our, our current timeframe has three, and you all were, has three different notices. 10 first notice, 10 the second notice, and seven days on a third notice. What we've found was that about 95% of our violations are corrected with two notices. And the remainder 5%, which is variable, we, in some cases, don't get anywhere. They end up in criminal court to resolve them. What we're looking at is that, at best situation, minimal time period of 30 days just to get to a citation. And then what will happen is it takes us several weeks to get a court date. And then what will happen often is the judge will add on a couple more weeks.
Yeah. Mary? If I could just make a comment here that all of us here know, but I want the public to know, is that so often we get neighbors who contact us who say, why isn't the city doing anything?
Something, yeah.
And, and I know Jenny's nodding, and you, you know this, Chris, too, that, that you get, you know, you get those calls, too. And it's just really hard to, to.
Well, it's the lengths of our compliance.
Yeah.
That we give. We're very generous.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do get those calls. We try to answer them to the best of our ability, too. Sometimes it is difficult to explain this process, though, with that. And again, this is just more of a summary. If we were to look at the last three years of data, that we see a tremendous drop-off with that first notice, further drop-off of about 10% on the second notice, and then not much more gain the rest of the way, which we're looking at another two weeks minimum. Benefits of current policy, violators get three or get multiple notices. They can't say we didn't tell people.
Yeah.
And it's much cleaner legally. When I can go before a judge, let's say we have a criminal case where I can send it off to prosecutors and say, well, we got this notice here, we got this notice here, we got this notice here. They love that. And there's usually no question about, you know, that they didn't get told. Due process is the heart of any enforcement. So we want to make sure we do that right. But, you know, it does come down to that violators can sometimes have several weeks at a minimum, two months to comply. And this is just, in many respects, before it even gets to Dakota County. Challenges, again, we're getting these complaints, resolution for even simple code violations. And we'll get into that when we talk about some of our abatement proposals. Multiple levels of enforcement, anytime we add another layer, that creates, well, more work for staff, but also the, the possibility that we, we could make some mistakes, too, on things. We're just adding more to it. It also reduces our staff efficiency that way. We did do a summer, we called just about every city in the metro, I think, at least 15 of them. And we talked to them almost, well, all the cities provided at least a 10-day notice on their first violations when, when they had them. The exceptions would be for any health or safety nuisances, anything that may be a threat, obviously, we will respond to in a, in a quick timeframe. Most of the cities had anywhere from a five to seven-day second-period notice. And there wasn't any other city that would indicate that they sent out a third notice. Usually by then, they were already issuing a citation or running it through their administrative citation process as well. And of which about one-half of them were using that. What we're proposing is that we recommend, we keep the first 10-day process, and we go right to a seven-day second notification with no third, third notification step before we'd follow-up with Dakota County with a citation on there. What we've also want to propose is that it be based on a matrix. Not every violation is the same. And I think it's prudent, sometimes we get a lot of questions about, well, how come you treat this differently from this one? Well, if we've got a guideline, I think that gives us a better basis for how we base our judgment, judgments on compliance dates. We've always worked with property owners, and we will continue to do that at every opportunity. If, if we've got somebody who contacts us or makes some effort to, to do the right things, that's all we've ever wanted. And we're going to continue that. And I'm indicating there, too, complaint states are usually provided by the court as well. That can be sometimes all over the place. So we have tried to make a real good contact with our prosecutors and say, here's, here's, you know, what this consists of. So they know what we're doing well. Each case that we send to Dakota County, we do talk about with them. And we've, I think we've got a good program there and all that works. Extensions are always reviewed case by case if they're requested. People do have hardships. Life does get in the way. And everybody has different resources. We try to weigh that out, too. This is awful to see, but essentially, it's saying the same thing. What the, this proposed matrix that we have on the left-hand side, they're down, some of the most common violations, this was something that Brooklyn Center was using. And I thought it was really good to lay out what our processes would be for these types of violations. The vast majority of them are still going to follow that proposed 10-7 policy that we're proposing, I thought it was there, with the exception, again, of some of the refuse nuisance conditions, which we talked about in, in our, one of our ordinance changes, as well any health nuisance. Or exterior structure stuff. We have this thing called winter that gets in the way once in a while. And it's pretty hard to replace that roof that we were talking about when it's January. So we got to be realistic on how we approach that, too, with compliance dates. I also want to talk a little bit about plain view abatement. Plain view abatement is one of those tools that I've, I've used in other cities for when we see, see things, and I've got some examples coming up there, where we may not get a response from the owner, but it may rise to the level of we can take care of it. The difference is here is we don't have, we, we don't get a search warrant for it. And it's one of these things that we would look at only on a case-by-case basis. I haven't ran across too many of those situations in Burnsville in the last two years. We would use it on maybe a handful of cases each year. But it may be those that we have an opportunity to correct on spot. And we'll, we'll show some pictures here a little bit where it may have worked. Examples, and let's hope this clicks here. Whoops, let's go back. Garbage piles around the houses. And we, we still have instances where we have vacant foreclosed homes where people may have left and emptied the contents out in the yard on occasion. This may help us take care of it. We can plainly see it and remedy the situation. Abandoned couches, abandoned appliances. I think one of my slides here had, you know, the refrigerator, which does create a safety risk. We're going to go out there and we're going to take care of it right away and send, send the property owner a bill if we can't get a hold of them. Those are the kind of things that this may be a tool that works. Let's get one more here. Or the garbage dump pile, debris pile, things like this. It isn't going to be major, we're going to paint somebody's house, we're not going to replace their windows. It's going to be small things that we get a lot of complaints on that are definite safety issues or eyesores, too. So that's a tool that we certainly want, would like to consider on that. What we're expecting, the expectations are by, by either making this policy change, minimize that timeframe for resolution, work with the property owners whenever possible. It may increase our citations, but also should hasten resolution. And part of that is, we're going to get before a judge then and keep moving. It's going to get there eventually, but it'll be expedited. And it does prioritize some complaints based on risk. It's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. And by using the matrix on there, we, I think we can set up some better guidelines for addressing specific types of concerns. And hopefully, maybe a faster response from violators, because we're going to move it up quicker. And that's one of the things I think will come out of this. So a discussion I am, I suppose, shouldn't say approve, this council approved modification of the enforcement policy and the, the matrix attached to that, and also use the plain view abatement. These are three questions I think that to move forward, we'd need to have answered, so.
Okay. Counsel?
Bill?
I'm for it.
Yeah. Mary?
I'm for it.
Yep. Councilmember Wynn says she supports the policy change and utilization of the plain view abatement for continued non-compliance items. She has a question about how does the city handle out-of-town residents in snow that receive notice when they are gone? And.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah.
For the most part, we don't know people's status.
Yeah.
We're going to, you know, we, we don't know them.
Notice somebody is taken care of.
That's the assumption, that somebody's going to make those changes in act number you have. Since I've been here, that hasn't happened. We've had people who have indicated they're going to take care of it. But typically, it's not an issue.
Okay. Mary?
Well, I was just going to say, I'm taking care of the mail and things that show up for one of my neighbors while they're in Florida. And we communicate.
By email, there's somebody.
That's right. I mean, somebody's getting their, you know, they're, they're getting their mail.
Yeah. And, and I think that's been reflected in just our case loads.
Yeah. Dan?
That was my only concern, too, is just people are out of town. When we cut it down from three to two, based on the chart, doesn't seem to be, that's going to be a problem. But when you're taking care of mail for someone who's gone for three months, do you actually open the mail or forward it or just get it out of the mailbox? You know, this requires processing. So something on the outside of the envelope that indicates the serious nature of what's inside could be helpful to flag it.
Well, it's coming from the city, I think.
Could be a water bill.
Madam Mayor, I could answer that.
Yeah, okay.
Our final notice citation state would be by certified.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So somebody would be signing for it. Somebody's going to be acknowledging receipt to that.
There you go.
That could be a problem.
Bill? Okay. Yeah. So for me, it is, there are just, even this last year, too many complaints from, and you all know, because we forward the complaints to you, you know, why aren't you doing something? You said you were going to do something about resident X. It hasn't been done. And then it goes through explaining our 10-10-7, you know, and that's, that's hard. I remember the one that I also forwarded, you know, how do I put my house up for sale when there's this garbage bag sitting out on the lawn that's been there for months?
Perfect example where plain view abatement might have worked. We'd go up there, we'd have somebody grab it and send them a bill for picking it up.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we try to do everything we can to involve the property owners, of course. Sometimes we run into those situations where they be, may be non-responsive or they vacated.
Yeah.
We don't have a responsible party at that point. And, and that's where we got to kind of make a decision on how we want to resolve the situation.
Yeah. Mary?
I, I just, in my supporting this, I, I want to say that I think that since you've come on board, I mean, I really, we've seen an improvement in the, the looks of the city.
Yep.
Good to hear that. Thank you.
We've heard fewer complaints.
Yeah.
And so I think, you know, since this is your professional judgment of what we should be, you know, the next step, you know, I, I think you, you know what you're doing.
Yeah. I mean, the graph tells it all. What happens with the first notice and then the compliance. I mean, the data doesn't lie.
And I think it's important to note here, this isn't just a handful of cases. This is thousands.
Yes.
This is many, many data points. And I, I think the data's reliable statistically.
Yep. Jenny?
Madam Mayor, I also think our reinspection fee has changed people's attitudes about code compliance.
Oh, that has worked.
Consequences are good.
That has. So staff, I think you've heard there is unanimous support to change and then just bring it back for adoption.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask for just a five-minute recess here. Thank you. And then we'll reconvene. Thank you. Okay, I'll reconvene our work session. And the next topic is our meter replacement. And our Director of Public Works, Steve Albrecht, is presenting. Steve?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I know you'll be disappointed I don't have a long presentation with this. But we'll go through this real quickly. Just to bring the council back up to speed, we approve the meter replacement fee to fund our meter replacement program. That fee is based on the actual costs the city will incur to buy the meters, replace the meters, and install them. We use kind of our traditional system of how we divvy up water costs, which we use the classifications, residential, high-density, or commercial. Those work very well in most situations specifically related to water use. As we move forward, the residential component works very well in this because all residential properties have the same water meter size in town.
Yeah.
I'd say 99.9. We might have one that has a larger one, but they all have the same size. So the fee we set for that, which is the majority of our customers, is set properly at $1.20 per month. Where we came into an issue is, we have tremendous variability amongst commercial properties and high-density properties. The meter sizes can range from 1-inch to a 6-inch meter, which means the costs range from 300-some dollars to over $5,000. And so to have one fee size fits all for those just doesn't work very well. So what staff is recommending we do is that we bring forward to you at a future meeting, actually, the 17th, an ordinance amendment, because it is, our fee schedule is adopted by ordinance, so we actually have to amend the ordinance to reset the fee for commercial, and, well, for actually all of our properties, to say your meter fee is based on the meter size you have. As I said, for a residential, that won't change their fee, it will be the $1.20 we talked about. But for the remainder of the meters, and I touched on that on the last page, which is not a significant number of meters, it really won't change things. You get down into the 1-1/2 inch up to 6-inch meters, that's where it changes, based on their actual costs. And those fees would go up. We do have one fee that would be $18 a month. However, that's seven properties in town. They are very high-water-use properties. Water is a major part of their business, so implication-wise, they're paying far more in their water use. This is a pretty minimal fee for the amount of water that they're using. And so staff would recommend amending the fee to reflect, based on your actual water meter size, that we would charge back what our actual costs are to replace that water meter, the radio unit, and the project cost. Nothing more than that. The city isn't adding on any additional revenue to this. And with that, I would take any questions. I could go through the table, but I think it shows pretty clearly what those variations are, that can be significant impacts to five, six times what their fee should be per month if we were to use the classification, and in some cases, maybe a 10th of what their fee should be per month if they're a smaller use. So with that, I take any questions that the council has. Again, we would bring this back to you as an ordinance at a future meeting. We just wanted to get some feedback before we proceeded with that to the council.
Actually, it makes sense. Yeah. And Councilmember Wynn says she supports staff recommendation. Anybody object to this? It makes great sense. When I saw that, your matrix here, 6-inch, wow!
Buck Hill makes a lot of snow.
Yeah.
So that's one of them. I mean, so you can imagine, we have other users as large of a water supply as that. So there are...
And that there's seven, and then it's not equitable to the homeowners, or when we're, so no, this makes a lot of sense.
It's based on if you have a larger meter, you use a lot of water, you're going to pay a little bit more. Concrete plants, for example, use a lot of water in a significant amount of time. Those type of heavy industrial users, so they're paying for the equipment they use. They're not paying for anything more than that.
That's right. And it's, okay. So staff, bring back the ordinance.
You will see it on the 17th.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Report, Bill, have anything? Mary?
Well, I have a 35 solutions report that, I missed the last meeting, but this was on the closed budget for transportation. And Ryan took the notes, and he sent some notes. I think that, there's nothing in here that you haven't read in the papers. But one thing I'd like to emphasize is that the gas, the 6-1/2% sales tax on gasoline would be on wholesale gas. So this is gas before it gets to the gas station. So with the idea that it's tied to inflation, so as the gas prices go up, so does the tax. The baseline gas cost is based at $2.50 a gallon, meaning if gas is at $2.20 a gallon, the wholesale tax would still be taxed, as always if it were $2.50 a gallon. Now, this would be on top of the existing gas tax we already have at the pump. So just so everybody knows that, the, this, the, the projection is that this would raise $3.4 billion over 10 years and would go into the highway user fund. Meaning, a portion of this would go to our MSAS fund. So there would be also an increase in license tabs. Ryan says his 1995 truck would have another $10 added on to his licensing. So, and there would be bonding. You've probably read all of this. So, and I think that that's pretty much it. There is a meeting tomorrow, or Thursday, too.
Okay. Dan?
Let's see, got some notes from the Burnsville Community Foundation on the Chamber of Public Policy. Public policy was a lot of discussion on policy statements and transportation issues and position statements and responses to some of the debates going on at the Capitol. And I missed today's community foundation board meeting, so can't report anything. I don't know what it was.
Okay. Well, I'll be very quick. The regional council mayors did not meet because everybody is in Washington, D.C., most for the National League of Cities meeting. So, but the International Festival, we're moving right along and already raising quite a bit of money, so that's a good thing. And everybody's gearing up for that. The Convention and Visitors Bureau was a short agenda, but a lot of discussion around, everything is going well with the, with the amount of occupancy, but we do have one property that's not paying their taxes. So we had some discussion around that and how we address that issue. So, yeah, it's been five months, so it's an issue. So, but, but we're working through that and with our staff, because we're the agency that levies that tax. Yeah. But, and then our executive director is, has contacted the owner, but there's, they're not, they're not here. So Jenny and Heather had a great suggestion, and that is, we contact corporate, because it's a franchise, but maybe they could, because they have to pay royalties if they're a franchisee.
They're obligated to, that doesn't mean they have to.
Well, but that's all, some of the stuff that you will have to look into. So if we find out from corporate that they're not paying their royalty, then we also understand what's going on here, so. But that's, that's the most significant part of the discussion. Had a great meeting with our accountant. Financially, we're very healthy, but, boy, we are going to start driving a lot of traffic to this destination, so that's good. Jenny, did I miss out on something with, I think those are the two things that's really driving to our destination, and then the other is, the big discussion was around that. Is there anything else?
No, that was it.
Yeah. But healthy financials. We're a very conservative group, but we want to make sure that we drive traffic to our city. And we have great assets here and great amenities. And Heather and I had our quarterly meeting for the Municipal Legislative Commission. We voted on and adopted the auditor for, for the organization, and we went with MMKR, who is our auditor. And so, and then we had discussion around the breakfast meetings and how that went. So looked for what worked, what didn't work. They're going to try and see if we have another meeting, I think, at the, our regents' meeting. Representative Atkins said, you know, we should have a meeting halfway through the legislative process to evaluate how things are going and what we need to do. There was an update on fiscal disparities, well, I don't think it's going anywhere. And then we have a group to look at new membership to our organization.
Heather, is there anything else?
I think those were the critical things. We reviewed our legislative update and the meetings that our lobbyists are doing with all of the other, and we had some information, but, interesting, but won't mention it. So that's it. Otherwise, is there anything else? Michelle? Heather?
No.
Yeah. Okay. That, we can adjourn.[1793.48]